All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the October 28th, 2024 School Board Meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Burdi?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
Human?
Here.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
And Chair Rash?
Here.
At seven present.
Thank you. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to start with asking for a motion to approve our agenda for this evening, as well as the work session and regular meeting minutes from September 23rd, 2024, and the work session minutes from October 14th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. And to start things off tonight, I'm going to invite Teresa, Principal Teresa Marty up to introduce some new science curriculum, which is some new changes to our elementary school this year.
That's right. Thank you, School Board and Dr. Zambrino, for having us. We're super excited to share this. We have a couple of things to share. The first one is that we're going to spend most of our time talking about our new science specialist that we have for kids. And the second one is just how we create a positive school culture. So I just wanted to take time to say how proud I am to introduce to you Liz Serminski, who is our new science specialist. She comes to us with a wealth of knowledge. She had done a lot of science work before, had aligned standards, was the science lead in her building. And she lives in South St. Paul and now gets to work in South St. Paul, right? We like to keep everything at home, so it makes it super exciting. She spent a lot of hours this summer working with Bridget Pharaoh, the science specialist at Capoja, aligning the new science standards that were implemented this year with our new curriculum. And I just want to say there's not a day that I don't get approached by other teachers in our building saying how happy they are they have science and how happy to have her teaching it. We have a new science lab up in the third grade hall. If you want to come see it, it's super fun, really bright and colorful. And she just brings a joy and enthusiasm that the kids and all the staff really appreciate. So just going to introduce Liz to you. Thank you.
Excellent. Welcome.
Welcome.
I'm Liz Serminski. I'm the science teacher at Lincoln Center. Have a quick demonstration for you. I'm so sorry to tell you that this building is haunted. And I proved it. So don't be too scared, okay? This, by the way, is what I did with fifth grade science today. The exact same thing, except they got to draw the ghosts.
Well, anytime a science teacher comes at you with a lighter, you know something exciting is about to happen.
No buildings with burnout. Now, I know you're really worried about these ghosts, but actually with science, we can get rid of them quite easily if the lighter works. Please be patient. They don't like to go.
Ooh.
This happens because of a scientific concept called convection. So essentially, warm air is less dense than colder. And so when the air in and around the teabag is heated, it will start to rise because it is much lighter. And so we learned about convection and heat transfer in fifth grade today.
Bravo.
Yeah. So we have some videos of some students.
Oh, because we noticed that water can soak on. Water can soak through paper towels. It can look gently. And then, so we put paper towels on, we made it stick where it seems. So we think it would really go.
I love the enthusiasm you can see.
Yeah, you might not be able to hear.
So they're talking about, they were learning about erosion, and now they are trying to prevent erosion from happening. So they're talking about how they use their different materials. The materials are very similar to what works in real life to stop erosion, mainly plants, but some other things as well.
To protect.
We are going to add some snowballs here and some of these here and all the mackens around it with two pigs on top of it, but it can stay on.
Okay, help.
Tell me, why did yours survive?
Uh, so.
Because we put like things around it.
What kind of things?
Like tin foil.
We put tin foil, these little.
And then paper on the top for like an umbrella.
Yeah. So they're just explaining their thinking, and they were very successful. Here's some more photos. We have second grade in some of these pictures is working on improving a paper house so that it won't blow away. They learned about like tornadoes and other windstorms. So how do we make our houses stronger so that that doesn't happen? Some first graders are working on how do rivers form? So they had mountains made out of crumpled paper, do some coloring on the top with a regular Crayola marker, and then spray with water so they could see how rivers were formed by water flowing down the mountain. There's some more pictures of the, of students working with their erosion prevention. And the one where the student is kind of going like this, with fifth grade, we made sundials and then we took them outside and they were amazed that they actually worked. I think that's everything.
Any questions for Liz?
So are you teaching then every day just different? Do you have all like first graders in a day, or do you have one through five in a day? Or how does your schedule work?
I have K through five in a day, except one through five, like I'll have a day off before their new cycle starts. So every day I see some combination of kindergarten through fifth grade.
We're in a five-day cycle. So basically, once a week, everybody gets a specialist. We go by day one, two, three, four, five, in case there's a day off, so that we don't ever skip that day. That way, they don't miss a specialist.
I love seeing the students so excited for academic content. And I think that's so, like, makes some such strong connections to other things that they're doing. You know, sometimes when we see specialists and electives, students sort of turn off and think that like that's free time. And like, to stay connected to the academic experience and the enthusiasm that you are bringing to the room is absolutely infectious. And that's really remarkable. And just really appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Do you have a budget for materials?
I don't know.
You're doing experiments.
So we're working with a curriculum, and so it does provide materials list.
Okay.
And so we have been taking it in small chunks so that we don't have to order every single thing all at once. We've been working with Leslie Gamas, myself and Bridget, and she have been doing it together. And so for about six weeks, I think we're going to make it even less time, at a time, we put together a list of like what each grade needs and then like consolidate so we're not ordering multiple.
Right.
Things when they just need the same thing. And so then we put together a list of, for our, myself at Lincoln and then Bridget at Capoja. And it gets all delivered and we kind of just split it.
Might be something to approach the Educational Foundation about.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
It's been really fun bringing, Teresa's been wanting this. Look how excited she is. Principal Marty, I should say, with all due respect. Right when I first started, she's like, can we do science? And I was like, well, I just got here. Can we like, you know, but we did hear through our surveys, a number of times that science was really a high priority for the community. So there was definitely community feedback and input. And we knew that after-school science activities were like, there was wait lists for that going on. And so it's fun to have it in there. I love hearing the collaboration. I know that Amy Winter met with our specialists and really trying to bring them together. So I'd love to hear that you're collaborating with Bridget and making those connections. And yeah, make sure you have what you need or let me know. My wife's a science teacher, so you know, she would be upset if she thought our science teachers didn't have what they need. Actually, I would be, and I think everyone would be. But super, like, high engagement. And like I said, our Student Advisory Council kids were singing praises of the class. And I know it's a great space. So it's like, yeah, so all the way around. Nice job.
Did you have a question, Wendy?
Yeah, I was just curious. Have the, have the students asked you at all, do they have any certain requests about certain science issues or things to do?
Um, yeah, they, you know, the first week was a lot of, we're going to do volcanoes. Are we going to make elephant toothpaste, which is just kind of this exploding foam stuff? There's a show on Netflix where that was done. So that's where that comes from. So yeah, I mean, they just want to see some things explode. And so, you know, so try to like do some of also that fun stuff. Like this week, we're just kind of doing this like fun Halloweeny science. We got some M&amp;M science and glow stick science. You know, so yeah, like the stuff that they have like seen in videos or movies or whatever, that's the kind of stuff. But then, when we are doing, you know, the actual lessons from the curriculum, they do say like, oh, I know blah, 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 because I saw this YouTuber said, you know, blah, blah, blah. So they are making connections to like, science stuff outside of the classroom that they have.
I look forward to you having conferences this week. All the parents tell you, and then we did this one at home.
I love that.
Yeah, that's what I said to them a lot, is, you know, like the volcano thing, you can do that at home. I bet you already have all the stuff.
Well, and hearing students, being able to identify how they can solve problems themselves through that sort of experimental model, I think is such a valuable lifelong lesson for all of our students to have and build up resiliency around. So excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we had one other part, and we wanted to highlight Lincoln Center's strong community culture. Lincoln Center has been recognized by MDE for the last few years as a PBIS school. And we've worked really hard at implementing strategies to increase our calm and positive school culture. And through this work that has been in various levels, we've been able to decrease our office referrals and increase our students' time in classrooms. So some of the things that we started last year with our PBIS efforts was our Packer Pride tickets and having the kids decide what they wanted their Packer Pride tickets to go for. So any adult in the building carries Packer Pride tickets and can give them out for kids when they see them being safe, respectful, or responsible, our three key foundation words that we reiterate with the students. And then the students come up with ideas of things we're trying to earn. So right now, it's a competition between stuffed animal day, extra recess, and an all-school treat. And so when they earn these, they come into the office and they sit in the debate about which one to put it in. And I hear every day which one's winning, and I better pick a date for it. So it's, that is a really exciting, it's fun to see them excited about what they're earning and what they're doing. And then last year, we started doing all-school assemblies to celebrate and recognize different things that were happening in the classroom, as well as in the hallways, with students and different student groups. And we've added a layer to that this year. Mr. Mast, our music teacher, and our students wrote a school song. And so we have a Lincoln Center school song that we start every assembly with, which is super fun. And now this year, our students are actually kind of running our assemblies. So for example, they're handing out the certificates to students. We had a kindergarten, or excuse me, first grade and third grade buddy class sing a song for the school as everyone was entering. Everybody in the school has been paired up for an older grade and a lower grade having buddy classrooms as another way just to build that collaborative community within the school. And then for our assemblies, they have different themes. So then our student ambassadors are involved, and they're doing pieces of it and spreading the message of whatever the theme is in the assembly. Then we do a bulletin board and other messages on our school announcements. So it's just kind of bringing everyone together. And then our next layer of that is, we wanted to, taking feedback from staff from last year, is provide more ways to support our staff on giving them strategies to help students both academically and with their behaviors. And so our intervention team and our school psychologists did a whole presentation on interventions for both academic and behaviors. You can click, you can see through the different links we have here of the slideshow that they did. They did a presentation, they did examples. They then created a Who Can Help? So if I'm a teacher and I'm struggling with a student who's academically struggling in one area, they can look at the list, reach out to that staff member, they can come and give ideas and collaborate together to support our students. We also looked, from getting feedback from our teachers, looked at our behavior form from last year and decided, what can we shift to better support detailing what has been done prior to them coming to the office, or what things did you work on with the team, et cetera? And through doing all of this, we have just seen that the students are in classrooms more, our culture is just, it's really calm and positive, and it is just, you're nodding your head because you walked our halls.
It's so good. I mean, all the buildings are, but honestly, kudos.
As someone who's been in South St. Paul for 26 years and taught at Lincoln for 18 of those years, like, it is amazing. And I am so supportive of all of our staff who have stepped up to do, when you know better, you do better. And it's teacher-driven, it's not coming from top down, it's truly teachers saying, hey, I'm an, I'm an expert in this. I'm talented in this. I'm willing to help others in this. And so we're all supporting each other and collaborating together, which then brings that whole positive culture across the building. So with the excitement of science and the excitement of all the things that we're doing with PBIS and MTSS, it's just been a awesome start to school year.
Oh, I love here. So great.
That's so great.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
What's PBIS?
Positive Behavior Intervention System. So it's a national, maybe an international. Yeah. And it's just different ways that you are positively helping shift how you think about behaviors, both academically and, you know, physically, socially, emotionally.
The tickets that she talked about, kids used to earn them and just take them home, right? It was kind of more of like, oh, I had a good day. But now that they know when they earn this, it goes for the greater good of the community, right? So that when they're earning something, we have these big footprints that are in the carpeting in the little office that they like to jump around to, to get back to where the buckets are. And so every month, there's, like she said, the three ones that they're voting on this time, but there's always something different. And they just know that they've earned something by doing their job really well at school. And now they get to contribute to everyone else being a part of that, too, which just adds just another layer of working together.
Well, that also builds positive foot traffic in the office.
Absolutely, yes.
And not just behavior foot traffic in the office.
Yeah. Come at the end of the day, and you can see many, many kids coming in with their handful of tickets to put in the bucket. So they're pretty excited.
Yelled down the hall, I earned four! Yay!
So I love that they think my main job is to come up with these ideas. They always say, you're so lucky you have the best job because you get to come up with these ideas and pull the Packer Pride tickets. I'm like, yes, I do. I love that that's the way they see what my role is.
Oh, that's such a transformative change to like what office culture can be like in a school as well. And to also be able to see that positive interaction on a daily basis is really remarkable.
Yep. It's a social spot for positive interactions.
Love that.
Sounds great.
Love that. So fun. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. For, to keep good feelings coming, for our next report, I'd like to invite Amy Winter up and Candace Burkhart to kind of give us an overview of district performances around some standardized testing and assessments that we face inside the school. You got a hard act to follow, though. Yeah. You got a really good team in front of you, too.
I know. I realize we're not as exciting, and we don't have the fun videos of the kids.
Don't have a lighter and fire.
We don't have a lighter.
Let's not, let's not downplay that.
Actually, but I would say this, it is actually really exciting to see work that we are planning, you know, in advance, thinking through how do we meet the needs of our kids and our buildings and our staff, and watch it get all the way to implementation and actually see the impact of our students. That's actually what's really exciting. And so, yes, we're giving a summary of the work from last year, but embedded in this is the planning that's coming into the future, and just the amount of time it takes to kind of make sure that that happens. So as much as it's not quite as exciting as the previous work, it's really, really exciting how relevant and important it really is. So, so we're going to do just a quick summary around our, just accountability measures that we collect and that the state collects over the course of a year. And I think the other piece of it is, is this is a district-wide summary. So it's not going to get down to an individual student level or a site level. That information, at least from a site level, is available on the MDE website, and you can just type in like a school report card. So that is available to the public. But we are really giving a broad summary of the district as a whole. So this presentation is really focused around sharing out our accountability measurements, which include attendance, graduation, the MCA, which identifies math, reading, and science. And then MTAS is also tied to that. And we'd like to highlight trends, celebrate areas of growth, and identify focus areas for improvement.
All right. We'll start first with attendance. Great. So you can see the attendance data that's in front of you. The data goes all the way back from the state to 2021, 2022. And there's on a two-year lag. So we don't have the 22, 23, 24 data in front of you, but I shared a little bit in the Friday update, and I can summarize that here as well for the board. So chronic, or I'm sorry, consistent attendance is defined as being at school for 90% or more of school days. So they count either excused absences or unexcused absences as an absence. So if you have more than 10%, then you're defined as chronic absentee versus consistent attendance. What's exciting, though, is you can see that we made some significant growth in that 22-23 school year. So we increased from 55.1% to 61.3%. And we also increased at a rate faster than the state average. I did poll some of that 23-24 data. It's always a little bit of a black box on how MDE polls our data when they make the final calculation. So big, big note of caution there that their final calculations next year may be a little bit different than the data I polled. But we also are projecting that we had about 68.6% consistent attendance. So another big year of growth for the school district.
That's huge. Big jump.
Yeah. So as Amy shared, it's, it's always kind of exciting to report out on. We had started some of these things in 22-23. We added even addition, more additional layers in 23-24. And, you know, it's always, I feel like implementation science says, wait, you know, five years to really make sure what you've done has made a big difference. But I, I'm optimistic that these things are really lasting and have made some major improvements. So we added different supports last year, including with the support of the referendum, increased psychologists, counselors, and social workers that really get at the root of why students are gone from school. We also have a partnership with the University of Minnesota that will continue through 2028, where we have grad students supporting at the secondary level, meeting with students. We've increased our partnership with Dakota County, including another meeting that we had actually just today, to continue talking about attendance supports for the district. And then we do monthly meetings with all of our social workers, Community 360 staff, our psychologists, our counselors. We've also added monthly clerical meetings because we found that they are the ones that really are inputting a lot of that attendance data. So making sure that we're all using the same consistent approaches, and they feel supported within that. And then we're also working on the creation of an attendance guidebook and revising that school board policy, as well as looking at even more evidence-based attendance interventions to put into place. So excited about some of the things we have already implemented and where we're heading in the future, and hoping that we're kind of a model for the state moving forward.
That's right.
So the second half of this is now really getting into the academics. And so the first area is going to be graduation. And similar to the attendance, the graduation data is a year behind the rest of our data. And so what you'll see here is, is the blue line is the state of Minnesota's four-year graduation rate. They do track graduation rate for five-year and beyond, but we just right now report on in the four-year. And then the kind of pinkish-red line is then South St. Paul. And so what you'll see is we had some going up, down, up through some of those COVID years. Right now, we are on a two-year trend that is increasing, and it is higher than that 2020 score. So we are moving in the right direction and seeing that growth. When you look at our MCA, which is our state assessment, and again, this does a snapshot of how our students are doing as a whole, and it tests them in reading, math, and science. And you'll see here the grades that they test. For reading and math, it's third through eighth grade. And then reading is 10th grade, math is 11th grade. And then science, they do just fifth, eighth, and high school. So this is our reading scores. And what you will see is, the state of Minnesota is in the orange, and South St. Paul is in that maroon color. And we are doing a multi-year view of this. And so starting from 2020 to 2021, and then going to 23, 24. And what you'll kind of see is that we have, if you look at the multi-year, we've done some up and down, but we are some, like, generally going on an upward trend, which is what we want to be doing. Ideally, you know, we want everyone to be successful. What we are noticing is, is that there is a gap closure that is happening with our upward trend and with the state either staying a little flat or a little down. On math, again, the state of Minnesota is in that orange, and we are in that maroon. And again, we are seeing increases as we go through multi-year. And the state is having some increases, but it's, we are at a greater rate than what the state is showing. And so again, in math, we are also doing some gap closure. And then finally, our science, we, over a multi-year, we have seen an increase. And so you see that 2.4% increase from 2020 up to 2024. And the state did a little bit of a dip, came back up. But again, we're also seeing some gap closure on that. So all of our data in both math, reading, and science is showing growth and continued growth, not necessarily that we're losing the momentum that we had for the previous year. We also like to take that data and dig it apart to kind of see how each of our subgroups are doing. We will look at students who identify as white, students of color. We will look at students who get educational benefits or free and reduced, students with an IEP who receive special ed services, and then students who receive language support as an EL student. And so this is also showing their proficiency level from the state level and what we see here in South St. Paul. And then here is the math information. And I would say that when we kind of subdivide that out, most of our subgroups are making that proficiency up. We do see a couple subgroups that we do need to put some attention towards because we're not necessarily seeing the rate of growth that we want to. But overall, we are seeing some growth. And then the last area is science. And I'm excited with our science specialists to actually give that direct instruction with our elementary students going all the way up, how we'll maybe see our kids a little more prepared to take this assessment in the future. So here's kind of the key takeaways, and also how we take this information and how we actually do planning moving forward. And so things that we're really excited about, reading, we are seeing increased proficiency. Math, we're seeing increased proficiency. And science, we're seeing increased proficiency. So we are obviously saying this is where we're at, we're excited about where we're at, and we need to keep moving forward. And so when we are doing some planning, moving ahead, there are definitely some strategies we are focusing on from a district-wide lens, and then also from an elementary and a secondary. And so number one is, we're really embedding time to actually look at our data and get it in front of our teacher leaders. And so we have two times in the summer that we do this once our year kind of ends. we have two times in the summer that we do this once our year kind of ends. And then we are also embedding checkpoints throughout the year, and we're also collecting different types of data, like what does the classroom environment actually look like for our students? And, and we're quantifying that, just to be able to say, how are we doing with our goals and what that looks like for our students? We also are supporting opportunities for teachers to come together and talk about what's working and what's not, improving their own learning through those PLCs or professional learning communities. This year, we implemented a new Danielson framework, which kind of gives a outline around what does strong instruction look like and how we can kind of improve our practice. And then we're embedding coaches at the site level to kind of support that work. And then we also have a committee, which is our ATPPS TDE, which is a group of administrators, teachers, who kind of make plans around how they can kind of support the work with what we're doing at the district level. And then specifically at the elementary level, you saw tonight the science specialists. We also have been doing some alignment with our math resources to the state standards, along with our assessments, so that we can kind of monitor how our students are doing. We are also pushing in some more support around our co-teaching model. So if we have students who, language is something that they're learning, and they're also learning content, we're bringing teachers together to be able to support that in the instruction. And then I know we've talked previously where we're giving some professional development for all of our teachers around the literacy updates around the science of reading. And so everybody is going through that. And then we are in year two of implementation of our reading curriculum, which is wit and wisdom and our UFLI. And so generally, we like to take about a three-year runway to fully get that up and going and feel like it's the normal practice. At the secondary level, again, we're doing a similar model where we're supporting our learners through a co-teaching model. They are also doing that professional development. And we're spending a lot of time right now on building up our CTE pathways and making sure we remove those barriers and really tying authentic learning with our students and what they want to do and what they're interested in. And then the secondary is also really digging deep and doing some learning around what are those key components that make a really strong lesson, and just kind of supporting each other and having that standardized across the secondary building. And then they are doing some additional focus just around equity training, on how to make sure that they know students and how they can tie what they're learning to what our students value and kind of improve just that overall experience at the secondary level. That is the fast-forward version of all that information. So thank you for your time, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Absolutely.
I have a question. I remember last year, when you were talking about the wit and wisdom and I fly, you were talking a lot about the, the frequency of the assessments of making sure students are getting, you know, weekly, or, you know, if not monthly, but weekly assessments, so that the, the MCAs wasn't just one big scary day where, you know, their entire future was, was decided. Have you seen, at least even at a classroom level or so, the benefits of doing more interventions or more knowledge of how students are doing on a more frequent basis?
Yeah, I don't know if we've taken the time to dissect that approach. You know, we, you know, third grade is an interesting year because that's the first year they take the MCA. And so what is kind of different is them being really used to taking online assessments, because we do some screeners at the lower level, so that they are more comfortable then to be on that device and take that state assessment. I would say we are being intentional, just so that the tool isn't the barrier. I don't know if we've necessarily quantified, you know what I mean, quantified it to make the direct correlation on that. But we are definitely being intentional.
We've definitely seen a lot of growth since I've gotten here around how we use data. And so it's been really fun to watch our, our built teams and our PLCs. And then also, as we've been, you know, I know we're not going to ever say we're there yet. You look at our data, we're not. But like, we've, I hope people here are seeing the level of transparency by which we're looking at our data now. Because I sometimes hear people say, we, like, look at our, I'm like, I know, like, yes, that's, I'm sharing it with you, so we can be transparent and talk about. But we're, we're learning a lot as we're doing. And one of the, it isn't the UFLI and the wit and wisdom, but an example where that's benefited us was our math scope and sequence in elementary school was missing a number of standards. So our kids were literally being assessed on things they had not learned. And so Dr. Sunstrom had come in and really laid out a scope and sequence for our teachers, which is great, because then they don't have to worry about trying to figure that out. But I was in, I'm trying to think of the teacher, I was at Capoja, they were doing, it was fifth grade, fourth grade class, and they were doing some math work, and they were doing an assessment. Terry and I, Mr. Britoia and I were walking, doing just some classroom visits. And it's like, oh, you're doing assessment. And like, it was almost like a jinx moment where the teacher had shared, I was like, oh, is that one of Dr. Sunstrom's assessments? We kind of said at the same time. I'm like, oh, how's that going? He said, you know, this has been amazing, one, to know what we weren't covering, and to have these assessments provided by our district, you know, academic team to say, use, and he said that the information he's getting is so much better. So like, we have work to do still as we're learning and growing with our new curricula, and even with curriculum we've had, where we didn't realize it wasn't necessarily addressing the academic standards that our students were supposed to. So it's, it's been really energizing and fun to see the work, the data digs that she talked about, our data retreats, sometimes we've come with our, our built teams, the level of conversation, the depth of knowledge and ownership of outcomes that our teachers are having is like amazing. Honestly goosebumps. It's, it's been really fun to watch them learn and grow together. And that's really how we're going to get better, because no one, there's no one person who has all the answers. It really is going to be that coming together. And you see what happening, we heard of with our science specialists across our two buildings collaborating. We know we're going to see the fruits of that labor. So it's really fun. But there's some learning still to do around, you know, with that new curriculum and those assessments.
Well, and one of the pieces, and this is the second time you've brought this forward to the board, and I pointed this out last time we were together, and really want to emphasize this for our community at large as well. But for, if you look at our data even further back, for the last eight years, our gap between the, our student achievement and the state has only been growing. And over time, that is what it occurred. This is the first time the administration has really brought forward the data in a raw way to the board and really sort of like owned where we're at. And clearly, as you've identified, and as everyone has, we want better for our students and for our community. And to be able to show that in the work that we're starting to do, that we're starting to move that gap, we can't cure that overnight. And I want to make sure everyone in our community really understands that. That is not an overnight solution. But the fact that we are being upfront and honest about the achievement and where we're at is a big step inside our district, because that's not something that had been brought forward to us before. And so I really appreciate that level of transparency and bringing that up. It's uncomfortable, because we do want better for our kids. But seeing that through the effort that we take together, that we can start making improvements, is a really positive message for our students, our teachers, and our community as well, because we can solve this problem, and we can, we can do better than where we've been before.
Another cool learning, since we have student reps with us, I won't name names, but one of our student reps kind of said that honestly, to a certain extent, some of the kids haven't always taken the tests as seriously either, because they, they're not required for graduate, for graduation. And so we're starting some dialogue around how can we tap into them to help get the word out, like, this is showing the whole world what South St. Paul is capable of doing. So don't just go see, 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 all the way down. Like, yeah, you can, and it'll get you through the test. And I'm not saying most of our kids are doing that, but we had heard, it just wasn't necessarily that.
Not a high priority.
Right? Yeah. So I'm really excited to tap into our strong student leaders here to help us get that word out as we approach those assessments. And I know I can count on these two, because they're already like all in on what they're doing and helping us. So I think there's just lots of opportunities tucked in within this. So it's, it's so multifaceted. But we're, I think some other pieces, like when I started, our, our elementary teachers were like, we have a super old outdated literacy curriculum. We went super fast and got that curriculum in and got it in a year before we even needed to. So they're ahead, they're doing that core literacy training, and yet, what you said, Sherash, is still true. It's still going to take some time, because you don't just start this massive new curriculum and instantly be expert at it. But we're hearing such positive things from our teachers and seeing, like, just the level of thinking is, is tremendous that I'm seeing in our elementary schools. And I'm sure Mrs. Marty could have gone on about that from, you know, that school perspective. She chose other topics. But we'll, we'll continue to be able to celebrate that, because we're seeing great things happening in our classrooms.
See, Amy, do you ever get to the point where you set benchmarks or expectations? We're not where we want to be now. Yes, we've improved a little. But do you ever realistically, okay, in five years, if we haven't closed this gap by 15, we've got to reevaluate something? Do you ever set those benchmarks, or?
So right now, we're actually focusing around how to identify, like, more realistic benchmarks short-term. And so like, one of the pieces that we're working on right now is actually the elementary report card, and saying, what is grade level expectations? And how do we communicate? And how do we, like, get that data on a more immediate scale versus waiting until the end of the year, or waiting until three years down the road? We're actually creating a system to give us internal data, so we actually can predict better. We can actually adjust and respond better to that before it's so after the fact. I mean, I would say it is definitely always, do we have the complete picture? I will tell you, I, I tend to lean more towards multiple measures, not just one. And I think this is one important one. And I also want more data to have a complete picture about what's working and what's not. But I do think we need to be responsive to our data. And if the data is telling us our kids aren't being successful, yeah, we do need to respond to that. But I think right now, we're focusing more on creating internal checkpoints that's going to give us, I think, more relevant data to pivot when we need to.
But on that, that's a great question, Director Felton. We do, each one of our schools does put together a school continuous improvement plan. So when you hear us say skip, they do have to set annual goals, and that is stating a, a percentage proficient. It might be on MCAs. There's other measures. As Amy said, we have FastBridge and others that we use. So there's multiple measures, which is always better. And I'll talk about it in a minute when I do my update. But part of our work with Studer Education, this year, we're working on our strategic plan. Then what we'll do right on the heels of that is we're going to develop what are called scorecards, which go very transparently, very publicly forward-facing. Here's the goals we've set, here's the strategies we're going to use, and here's how we're going to hold ourselves to account. So you'll see that as a major portion of the work we're going to be doing. So we're already doing the skips and those other pieces and the data digs. But we are going to be, again, fully transparent about what we're setting to do and how we're going to hold ourselves accountable to meeting those measures. So it's, it's going to be exciting work to do.
And I also want to recognize the work the teachers are doing around that. Like, teachers like feel a great deal of responsibility around student achievement. And when it's falling short of that, I know what that feels like, and that's hard. And to kind of pick yourselves up by the bootstraps and really put in the work to make that improvement, that's a big lift. And so really appreciate the efforts that the teachers are making through that process, too. So, excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy.
Amy.
All right. Up next, a couple highlights from other things. First is public listening session submissions. At our last meeting at the district office, which is the first meeting in the month, at 6:30, we have public listening session in which students can come and make comments to the board. They can also submit that via the school board website, commit those forms. We had five people come in in person and one person submit online. Most of those comments were around things related to Amazworks. Those who were expressing concern about the curriculum, pretty specific elements of the curriculum that they had concerns about how gender was being presented, some who were speaking in support, or we had one speaking in support of that curriculum, and then one encouraging the board to stay in the role of governance and to have these decisions at a management level. And so we had a few people who had come in, and those considerations were passed on to our curriculum team and our administration as well. And next, I will turn to Vice Chair Ann Claflin for highlights from our work session, which was busy.
Thank you. Yes, the work session, just before our business meeting tonight, we went through the audit report for the district. We'll hear that in a bit more high-level description later this evening. But we've discussed that as a board and also as a finance committee earlier this month. At the previous work session on the 14th, we also heard this presentation that you just heard from Amy Winter and Dr. Burkhart on the accountability measures, and discussed that in a bit more depth as well. And heard a very similar presentation from them, but from a slightly different perspective, through the World's Best Workforce Program. And part of that is having an achievement and integration plan report. And they covered five different goal areas that we have for being ready for school, addressing some of the early learning concerns that we have, making sure that students get screened and are ready to start school. And the, just like we heard in our last presentation, the steps that the district is taking to improve upon achieving those goals, making sure students are reading at grade level, closing some of the racial and economic achievement gaps that we also highlighted tonight, making sure students are ready for career in college and graduation. And, yeah, we've had a lot of long discussions about these. I'm glad to bring it to the public tonight.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. Next, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Zambrino for some highlights from around the district.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief, since I know we have other presentations yet here tonight. But I'm going to just piggyback on what we heard out of our colleagues at Lincoln Center, like, what a great start to the school year it has been. I, you know, you just keep hearing it wherever you are. And it's been our secondary building this morning, super positive, great start. Talked to staff on both sides, and, you know, it's been fun to hear people say, like, normally when we get to MEA, I'm kind of gassed. And it's kind of like a bonus. Like, I just made it all the way great to MEA. And like, and now it's, you know, this longer weekend versus like the rest and recovery weekend that sometimes it has been in the past for, and I've been there, too. So I can totally understand that. But all the kudos to the teachers and staff in the buildings. Again, I was at, you know, Lincoln and Capoja multiple times. Kids are doing great. Teachers are doing great. And, and they're so kind. I read to Janelle Johnson's, we talked about Sharks. She asked me to come and talk about Sharks. So I did a little slideshow and put together. They sent me the coolest thank you note that's hanging in my office. So if you ever need your bucket filled, just talk to any South St. Paul student, because they are amazing. But like I said, just a shout out to our, our teachers and our administrators and other staff. I know Chuck had shared in his weekly how tardies are down significantly, unexcused absences are down significantly while we're not there. We're up in math, reading, science, attendance, graduation rates. We just got a really good audit. We're sitting in a pretty good financial position. So like, yep, we got work to do, and I'm really proud of the work that everyone, our team in here and in our buildings is doing to make just really everything come together. So Packer Pride should be running really high in the community. I want to make sure I cover that. I also wanted to thank our fall coaches and for activities and athletics, like really, wow, I see Brady Krieger over here. Did we even have any rainouts this whole fall? I mean, like, it was like the best weather we've ever, you don't have to answer that legit. But like, there was like the best weather you could ever have for fall sports. Like, I know sometimes it's just a coin toss if you're going to get things. And our football team did great. It made us proud. Our volleyball, those girls are really coming together under Tyler LaRosa's leadership. So shout out just to everybody who's makes that, because that's the stuff that we hear kids say routinely. We've done so many focus groups with kids. We got those participating, our clubs and activities sitting here with us tonight. Luckily, didn't have to run in from the shower to get here tonight, which is nice. But we know that's a piece that really draws our kids in. So just want to say thanks for all that great work. And we're just going to continue to build on all that. I do want to remind people, I think everyone knows, we got elections coming up, but please do not miss through all the general election noise that we have, a very important board election. So we've got three seats open and six great people running, it looks like, for those. So we'll see what our community has us working with as a board. But excited to see those results come in. And we will have elections going on at Capoja. We'll have extra staff and myself, and our SRO is on hand. I don't anticipate any concerns, because that's just not who we are in South St. Paul. But we will have elections going on there, so we'll make sure to have extra hands on, onsite there. I did mention Studer Education. That's who we've been working with on the strategic plan. A super big thank you to everybody. We had so many people participate in our focus groups, and that's students, staff, families, and as you see in this picture, community. Give a shout out to Lisa for all the logistics behind the scene, because every one of those things takes so much time to plan. So Lisa Brandbecker's been essential in that. But it was so great to, to get to sit in those spaces and hear the feedback. Lots of great things happened and lots of work to do. And that's why we listen to people. This, this picture here is from the very last focus group we held, which really was exciting for me. I had reached out to I had reached out to the city to say, hey, we're doing this, these focus groups. Would you guys be willing to come? We held one just for them. You can see basically the entire city council there, Ryan Garcia. Chief Wiki couldn't make it, so Commander Salmy came, Deb Griffith, and then the woman on the far right, that's Tina Poznanski, who's our Studer coach. And she's been very well received by everybody, like Terry Breitoy and I went to their conference last week. He had said it before, but he said it again to a stranger that we met there, so I know it must be true, that he said it's the best professional development he's had in 20 years. And, you know, people like Terry deserve that because he's been here for a long time. He's committed his career to South St. Paul, and he doesn't, he's like everybody else. He wants to be a lifelong learner and grow, and so our principals have really received it well. So what we'll be doing next is taking all that data from the focus groups. It's all anonymous, but it's a lot of data, and there's lots of overlapping themes actually between all the groups. And so that's going to go to our steering committee. So they're going to go through that to look for some common themes, and then that'll help us identify like pillars that we want to build for our strategic plan. So that's going to take some time because we're meeting, actually meet next day, tomorrow Wednesday, I think.
After the election, the day after the election.
Oh, day after the election. Coming quick, next Wednesday. So I'll be there to join them, and that meeting itself, the steering committee, went through the same process of providing feedback on what's going well, wrote, you know, what's not, and things that they're hoping to see, words that would describe us if we were the best. And there were tears in the room. So this, the group of people who showed up ready to do this work, again, very representative, really were leaning in and very excited, and depending, we may have a new mission vision and definitely action steps that'll come out of that. So that'll be brought to the board for, they'll make the recommendation to the board to approve our strategic plan. And as I mentioned, when Director Felton asked his question, then the next step from there is how are we going to deliver on this? So that's where we'll build out scorecards with metrics to measure and hold ourselves accountable and be transparent about where is it going well, where do we not quite get there? And I know in the past, those have been developed and never really used. And so they will be for anyone who's been involved in that process and didn't get to use those, we will. And that'll be our forward-facing document. So very excited about that work. We've done a lot to, on that idea of stakeholder engagement, a lot of work to build in engagement opportunities. We're trying something a little different based on feedback from last year, so we're having a family advisory committee rather than doing an academic advisory committee, a calendar committee. Tina Moses, trying to get with them for tech. We're going to have one standing meeting and then roll those topics through that group so we can have, it's streamlined for them, and then they have that opportunity to provide input across all areas, and we don't have to keep reaching out to our principals, say, we need people for the calendar committee, we need people for this. So we had a nice thing where parents could use a QR code to sign up if they want to get involved, but you can see our website there has the link if you want to still sign up. We'd love to have you. As I've said before, on the worst day, our kids are the best, and they are the best of the best, and here are two of them. Very excited about this QuestBridge opportunity. So QuestBridge does national college scholarships. I don't have the list of universities, but they have partner universities, and whoever gets picked gets a full ride, four-year scholarship. And so we have two finalists out of the 70, almost 300 that were named. So 20, over 25,000 applied. We have a couple in there, and there's only 12% of them that came from the Midwest. And we have a student who got one and was on it this year, so Jamie Shepherd's son. I don't think she would mind that. Most of us know about this, and what a life-changing thing for their family. And so I'm hoping we can continue to build this. I believe Allison Terrell brought this partnership in at the high school. So excited that that's happening for kids. So fingers crossed, prayers, whatever you do, do it your way and send them the good thoughts or whatever you do. So hopefully, we can come back and report that they got through. Mental health, as you know, is a major topic of conversation, really in all areas, but especially in education. And we had some leaders in our district that were recently featured on a podcast, so Principal Borg, our new assistant director in student services, and then Dan Hodge, who's the psych at the middle school, were interviewed to talk about, you know, the warning signs if a student's struggling, how we can foster that mental health. Part of our safety and security work that we did coming into this year was to build out a risk assessment process. So a couple of years ago, when I got here, if the student was using threatening language or we had concerns about self-harm, we didn't have a formal process. We adopted a nationally evidence-based system. So we're really still learning, but really getting stronger in this area to identify whether or not, you know, there's something we need to take action on. But you can listen to podcasts and hear how our team made us proud representing South St. Paul in that conversation. Always fun when the new musical comes out, so the Fall Musical. We've got Willy Wonka coming up here, which I think we all know Roald Dahl's story about Charlie and getting the golden ticket, so it's going to be fun to see that play out on our stage. And so there's performances coming on November 15th and 16th at 7:00, and then matinee performances on the 16th and 17th at 2:00. I'm excited to hear the feedback. Every time, it's always glowing, so I'm sure it's going to be a fun show to see. All right, Packer pride in action, homecoming. What a great homecoming week we had. I mean, I don't think you could have asked for better in terms of just the way our kids rallied around each other, seeing our older students come into the elementary schools and rally up and build excitement for the littles. They just, man, you just see the way they look up to the kids when they come through, and I see some familiar faces on that royalty there, Amal. Cooper, Brooke, and help me out someone, I'm blanking on the last name, Bridget.
Brady.
Brady, thank you. That should be an easy one with all the Bradys in the room.
Brady and Brooke are twins.
Yes, yeah. And, you know, fun kids. I mean, every time I see Brooke, she just makes me laugh. I saw her mom with a big cutout of her at the game the other day for, at the soccer game, so obviously a very fun family. So great choices there, but great to see a big win. Last year, we had rain delay where we were all locked in the pack for however long and then had to finish the game the next day, not to the outcomes we want. So I just don't think we could have asked for better. The weather, the week of celebration, you know, and then, of course, the big game. So Packer pride again. Fun thing that Principal Breitoy does, I'm glad he kind of switched it up, so it kind of had thrown me off a little bit, but every October, there's a day called Unity Day, October 15th, where we're encouraged to wear orange and make a statement against bullying. And so in the past, they've done a big peace sign, so it's kind of fun. I was sad I was not able to go because I go up on the roof with Dinette when she's taking the pictures, and the kids kind of get a kick of seeing you up there, and I was not able to join, but I love that they took the K for Capoja and kindness. And it's just so much fun. You see the staff and the students, and then they blow this thing up, poster size, and stick it on the walls, and the kids come by and find themselves. So just really cool way to say that we just don't tolerate bullying here. That's not who we are in South St. Paul, and if it's happening, please let us know. Lots of ways that families or staff or students can report. We have our Help Me app. We've got our counselors, our administrators. Anyway, we don't tolerate it. So it's great to see that fun, positive spin on that. Our tri-district CAPS moving great things for our kids again there. So CAPS is Center for Advanced Professional Studies, and so we have different programs within that. This is a picture of a group of our students in the Transportation and Trades Program. So they got to actually make a sidewalk extension at Two Rivers High School. So again, the tri-district is our district, it's South St. Paul with West St. Paul and Inver Grove Heights. So when you see why would they be doing that there, that's where a project was able to be done, hands-on and real life. So super cool to see kids being able to explore like the fundamentals of concrete work, learn about that, but also hearing, like, there's the hands-on work, but there's also leadership opportunities within all these fields. So great that they're learning from professionals in industry. So thank you to South Dakota State University, Semstone, and Gressler Companies for supporting that really great opportunity. Again, we've talked a lot about stakeholder feedback in our last few meetings, and one of the big things we learned last year when we were having conversations around academic pathways, we heard it over and over and over again from high schoolers, that they did not feel like, and this is no dig against anyone else, we didn't have the position, but they didn't necessarily know how to choose the courses or plot out their path. And so, and our counselors are working with many, many kids, and so we were able to bring in a college and career advisor this year. Leal's his name, and he's doing a great job coming in, helping kids figure out, where do you want to go after graduation, like knowing what options exist. Like, no one sat with me to say, here's all these different possibilities. So I don't know that anyone would have said, look at superintendent at that time, but, you know, who knows? But that's the thing, right? You want kids to have lots of exposure and lots of opportunities. So he's already had kids at college and career fairs and having recruiters come to the school so kids can come right in there and hear from the colleges straight themselves. So really, again, listening to our stakeholders, here's a gap, filling that in so the kids have this opportunity to really explore and know that they have an adult that they can go to to ask questions. And very, very excited about this. We've talked a lot about some of the challenges around our academics, and, you know, we have some students who have some challenges, but when you look at our data, for example, you look at our lowest achieving student, our students who are learning English. I mean, back in the day on No Child Left Behind, they defined LEP is what they used to call it, Limited English Proficient, meaning that the kids aren't going to be able to perform well on the test, and yet we test them. And I do think we should, but we also know we have kids who really need a push, an advanced push. And so I'm very excited to have Jake Knoss join us this year. He is working with our elementary students and teachers. So this is part of our new advanced academic programming, so it's not gifted and talented where it's so narrow, like you have to pass a test, but really a broader sweep, knowing that we know our students best and who's ready for some push and some challenge academically. So we're starting with reading circles. We'll be moving to math and looking at a telescope math for students who are ready to do math a little more quickly. So right now, they're doing book club-style literature explorations. I love the looks on their faces, some thinking hard, some having fun, but they get to meet once a week with Mr. Knoss and reading, you know, deep discussions of books, and these reading circles will change every couple of months. We can rotate kids through, again, our long-term plan is that this will build up into the secondary, and then we'll have offerings in both literacy and mathematics. So again, that was something we've heard that people often shop around, and we haven't had, and so excited that our families, I never want a family to think, I need to leave South St. Paul Public Schools to get what we need. And this is part of our plan to address that, as our pathway work's been going on. All right, and I'll wrap it up here with just some dates to remember. We've got Halloween coming up. Someone brilliant on the calendar committee said, let's not have school on Halloween for grades K through five, so they don't have to worry about all that stuff. But just want to make sure that people know that's happening. We have professional, or conferences and things happening, so no school for all students on the first. Got Thanksgiving break coming up right around the corner, which blows my mind. I can't believe we're almost into November. Elementary, you have conferences the 30th and the first. And then on the secondary side, we got choir concert, band concert coming up on the 19th and 21st. Fun to see our music programs starting to really thrive and hoping that fifth-grade band that we put in after the referendum will start to really drive that interest in music. I know the kids have said they love it in elementary school, so that's been really fun. Yeah, and the Tri-Wana's coming on November 26th, and then we've got a, we're rolling over. I said thanks to everybody for the great work on our fall season, but we're rolling here. We've got gymnastics, boys hockey, girls basketball, starting on November 11th, and then a boys' basketball and wrestling starting on the 18th. Yes, girls wrestle, and yes, our girls wrestling program is awesome and has an awesome coach. I know sometimes people are surprised when they hear that, but so many great opportunities here in one small but mighty district that is on the rise. So again, thank you, thanks to board for all your support, and I think about all the things we've been talking about and working on. There's so many great things and yet more work to do. So excited about our future.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
That's great information inside there. All right, up next, we have our consent agenda items, which are financial claims, staffing and personnel, and a part of the board packet that has been presented already to us. I am looking for a motion to pass our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. All right, buckle up. We've got some business items. Lisa's going to call me out if I miss a resolution along the way as we sort of work our way through. But up first, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution of the governing board supporting, form a application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I get to call you up, Brady Krueger. You've been patiently waiting.
So every year, the Minnesota State High School League Foundation takes some of the money that essentially the league has been doing very well financially, and they're using some of that money to give back to schools in the form of grants. So we are applying for a grant, and they, we are encouraged to use these grants to encourage students that may have a financial need to participate in our athletics and activities programs. Obviously, most of you are well aware that we have the Stride for Packer Pride, which is done by the Schultz family, which has been a tremendous help, providing scholarships for kids in need that want to participate in athletics and activities. The money that we use from this grant would be used to help supplement that. Obviously, we're not going to take that away, but it's just able to help us meet more kids where they're at.
Absolutely. Any comment or questions? Great effort on that. Lisa, will you please call a roll call vote on that?
Director Hume?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Birdy?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
And Cher Rash?
Yes.
At seven ayes?
Motion carries. All right, don't go far. Up next, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the Boys' Swimming Cooperative Agreement with, between South St. Paul Public Schools and Two Rivers beginning the 24-25 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, I come back to you, Brady Krueger.
So I don't think it's been a secret. I've been here a couple of times talking about cooperative agreements, and we're really using these cooperative agreements to make sure that the kids at South St. Paul are still able to participate and benefit from participation in athletics and activities. And our boys swim program has just simply been on the decline to the point where we aren't able to run the program independently ourselves. And so I have been working to try to find a cooperative partner. Two Rivers, which is a tri-district school neighbor to us, has graciously offered up the opportunity for our boys to swim with their program. So again, it gives our kids the opportunity to participate in swimming, benefit from all the things that swimming can provide, and it just ensures that we have a diverse set of programs for our kids to participate in.
Love that. Any questions or discussion? Just want to acknowledge and appreciate that effort, you continuing to work for our kids so that they can pursue the activities that they're passionate about.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Thank you so much, Brady.
All right, have a great night.
Have a great work.
All right, up next, we're looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve scheduling a special board meeting Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, to canvas election results. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I'm going to turn to Lisa, who's become an incredible sort of expert on elections, as we've had to navigate some special ones on our way through, but this is core requirement for us to be able to certify the election that happens. Any details I'm missing?
Nope, just, we just need to canvass the election results within three and 10 days of the election, and with the next school board meeting after that is not until the end of November, so we need to have a special meeting just to canvas those election results and offer the elections, certificate of elections as well, so.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you for your work on that. Lisa, you have saved us on many occasions as we continue to navigate the system and when the rules have changed around the elections as well, and I appreciate your efforts in that.
At what time will the meeting be held?
We're going to probably do a 5:00 meeting, and then we've got the regular work session right after that. And just as a reminder, on two, we're meeting on Tuesday of that week because of Veterans And just as a reminder, on two, we're meeting on Tuesday of that week because of Veterans Day on that Monday. We cannot have meetings that evening, so we've shifted our meetings to work session and that special meeting to Tuesday, the 12th.
Excellent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Next, we are looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the acceptance of GIFs report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, I'm going to call up Brady Hoffman to acknowledge the incredible support our district continues to get from our community.
Yes, good evening. We have three donations this evening. The first one is from the South St. Paul Lions for middle school planners. We have a donation from the Waterus Company for the Lincoln Safety Patrols. And then we have a donation from Woodbury Lutheran Church for the Capoja Family Fun Night. So grateful for their support and supporting our kids and our programs in our schools.
I'm always impressed with what you're able to bring forward. Any further discussion? Other than just thank you to all of those groups who continue to support our students? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. I thought I messed that one up for a moment because GIFs used to be resolutions, okay. Next, we are looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the June 30th, 2024 audit report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
For discussion, Brady Hoffman, you also have a guest with you today.
Yes, school districts are required to have an annual audit performed each year. And so this evening, that is coming to a close for the 23-24 fiscal year. So we have Aaron Nielsen here with us from MMKR. He's the audit partner and he's going to go over the audit results.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, appreciate your ongoing relationship with the district as you help with our audit report each year.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity before the meeting this evening to go through the results of the audit in a little more detail at the work session. We would, we're going to flip through the results of the audit just to share with the public what we've reported and just some higher level comments to share with you. So get right to it with the results of our audit. We have issued what is known as an unmodified or a clean opinion that the financial statements as of June 30th and for the year then ended are fairly stated as of that date. We've also issued our reports on internal control and compliance with government auditing standards. As you can see, we had just the one comment with limited segregation of duties. And as we said, that's been common for the district and districts of your size with a limited number of individuals involved in the audit process and the financial reporting process. But we're pleased to report we have no instances of non-compliance to report with regard to those results. The next slide we have, we shared the results of our single audit, so we're pleased to report that the results of the single federal audit, federal awards this past year, we presented that they're fairly stated. We had no instances of non-compliance to report this year. And then the last area of compliance that we tested is the Minnesota Office of the State Auditor's Legal Compliance Manual. As I mentioned, there are seven broad categories with lots of individual tests and compliance and within each one. And we had just the one comment with regard to timely payment of invoices. And it was one in our sample of 25 for that specific component that we identified and talked about how that can occur with the requirement to make sure all the checks and balances and approvals have happened with an invoice. But a good reminder to share with the board and to share with the staff and make sure, continue to work with that. I did want to make one comment. Last year, you may recall, we had one finding with our single audit testing and we're pleased to report that that was corrected in the current year. And so you can see, we did not have any findings in that area. The slide we have before you now shows historical information about the adjusted ADM or average daily membership and then the resulting pupil units for the weightings of the students, where they land and the grade levels. And as you can see, and we talked about, the district has been experiencing a declining enrollment in recent years. This past year, that represented a decrease about three and a half percent, looking at ADM for 24 compared to 23. Our next several slides focus on the general fund, which is the primary operating fund for the school district, the largest for activity by far. We show several years of the financial activity of the general fund and you've maintained a healthy or stable financial position for many years, absent from significant ups and downs. I would say when you've had changes, for instance, when COVID came through, changes with improved levies and changes with, as approved by taxpayers, there's always been an answer and included incorporated in the budget process. So as you see, when we move to the next slide, we dive a little deeper in the fund balance components and we talked about the various categories within the general fund. What I did want to share is that the district has again continued to meet your fund balance policy goal of that unassigned fund balance level that you've shared that you want to maintain. A couple more for the general fund, so we look at the general fund revenues. Really shows the concentration of sources where districts are funded. For your general fund, state sources, common to all the school districts we work with, the primary source of resources to educate the students of the district. As you can see, this past year, state sources made up approximately 69%, followed by property taxes making up about 21%. The other comment I wanted to share for the public that we talked about is the revenues in your general fund making up about $54.6 million this past year. So just to give you a gauge of the size of the overall operation for your school district and those results coming in better than anticipated in the budget and with an increase over the prior year as planned in the budget. A similar graph with expenditures, we show a budget to actual and comparison to the prior year, salaries and employee benefits making up the focus of spending within the general fund, which we see at the districts, all districts we work with, making up about 77% of the district's general fund spending this past year for that focus of education. The total expenditures for the district amounted to about $50.3 million. And we talked about how close the district came to budgets, so coming in just under budget as anticipated overall. And then an increase over the prior year as had been planned with the budget process. Just a couple of comments for the food service fund. We talked about the, both of these operations, the improved operation specifically with the community service fund over many years to get that into a stable financial position. Both of these funds experiencing an increase in participation levels and activity as we've gotten through hopefully the COVID pandemic and further along where people are comfortable to participate in the programming for community service. And then with the states plan to fund all meals for students and increase participation in that area. And then just a couple of comments on the entity-wide financial statements. We spent a little more time to it on the board and as you're presenting and budgeting, you really do focus on the individual funds. This is the one area where I say you also get a long-term perspective. So we discussed the increase over the prior year. A lot of that tied up in specific areas where it didn't provide additional funding beyond what we talked about in the individual fund basis, which I feel is fair to discuss and what you have to work with. The net investment in capital assets where you're spending, you're paying down the debt on the infrastructure, your buildings at a faster pace and they're depreciated. Some of the, an increase in restricted resources with the improved financial position of the food service fund, the community service fund, debt service fund, and some of the state-funded mandated restrictions. And then that unrestricted category with an increase with changes in statewide pension obligations, which is really the basis of why it's in a deficit position, your proportionate share of them. So many districts have that same presentation where there's a deficit at that level. You are continuing to make your payments as required, so you're meeting the standards with regard to that. And it's simply a matter of how we have to present that for the entity-wide financials. With that, I did want to thank your staff. It is a significant time commitment on their part to add to the day-to-day activities. I know they're planning and preparing for new GASB standards all the time. We'll have another new one next year with GASB. We're up to 101 now for compensated absences. So I think we were under 30 when I started.
Wow, that's a substantial increase in just the workload that accompanies that. Well, I know that is the third time that has come forward to the board, but any questions or comments that would like to be made?
I think I'd like to thank Brady and his team in the district office for the work they do. I know you've come and spoken to us before, Mr. Nielsen, and I feel like you're always really positive about, we're doing everything we can to make sure that this is a clean process and we're very transparent about what our weaknesses are, like the size of our district regarding segregation of duty. So thank you to the work you do in the office, Brady, and thank you for the audit.
Thank you. I'd like to say, when we're giving a boring presentation, that's what you want from your auditor.
Appreciate that. No fireworks, no, no lighters, no, nothing to accompany that one, so we'll leave that for the science teachers. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you both.
Have a good night.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Next, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the revised TDE agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I come back to Amy Winner.
Thank you for giving me a little more time here. So last year, I, my team brought forward the ATPPS and the TDE plan, which is the Alternative Teacher Professional Pay System and Teacher Growth Development and Evaluation Plan. And so we are in year one of implementation with this new plan. And what we realized as we got into the plan, we needed to adjust the calendar a little bit. And so on the very end of the pages, there's a timeline on pages 25 through 28 that outlined when we should be doing different things and communicating with staff in the process. And as we're implementing this new plan, we need to adjust the month of March just a little bit. And so this is an ask to make that adjustment to that plan.
Excellent, which you brought forward at our last meeting for us as well. So any further questions or comments?
I think a comment that we brought up when you brought it to us is we really appreciate that you are listening to the feedback from the teachers and the leaders, that this is a change that will benefit and make this a better plan. And I think that that's something that we have to support, right? We're making it better.
We wanted to align like our practices and how we communicate and the timeline in which we communicate to our staff. And so to have it in writing is actually later than when we actually want to communicate. So we want to just match that up.
Perfect, all right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, next, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution authorizing employment of board member Wendy Felton as a substitute in a classified position in the school district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I'm going to turn to Joel Miltier. Now, we've got three of these on here tonight, so if you could just do a quick overview on the one and I'll just keep returning to you on those.
Go through the resolutions. Great. So according to Minnesota Statute 123B 195, school board members may be employed by the school district as an employee as long as the amount earned does not exceed $20,000 in a fiscal year. Additionally, employment must be or must receive majority approval at a meeting in which all board members are present. The board members on this resolution have been substitutes in the past and would like to continue as substitutes for the 24-25 school year. Majority approval is required by the school board.
Excellent. Any questions or discussion? Okay, Lisa, will you please call or roll call vote?
Director Lala Burdi?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
And Chair Rash?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Motion passes. All right, then, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution authorizing employment of board member Kim Human as a substitute in a classified position in the school district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion remains much the same?
It remains much the same. Exactly the same, as a matter of fact.
All right, Lisa, will you please call or roll call vote?
Director T Felton?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Burdi?
Yes.
And Chair Rash?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Thank you. Next, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution authorizing employment of board member Tim Felton as a substitute in a classified position in the school district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion remains the same. Lisa, will you please call or roll call vote?
Yes, right. Director W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Burdi?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
And Chair Rash?
Yes.
At seven yeas?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
All right, that makes us through all of our business items for the night. Now that we do this once a month, it is always a slightly longer list than we've had previously. But I do appreciate that we've got a little bit more time in our work sessions for discussions and further inquiry. But next, I'm going to turn to our student school board reps for their report this month. So if we could invite Amal and Jackson up, you guys get to take center stage. You've been patient through the night.
Finally. All right, so this is just a quick update. It's kind of similar to last meeting because we haven't started our principal advisory board yet. We're actually starting this week, so next meeting, we'll update you on that. But to tailor our student life to the test scores and data that we received, for cell phone policy update, we believe that this policy will help raise student test scores. Same with the attendance policy, when students are in class, they will probably do better in school. And really excited about the career in college counselor. His name is Mr. Booth and he's done a lot of interactive lessons and college visits with us and even during lunchtime. There's just plenty colleges that come to visit us and it's a great opportunity for us as students. And do you want to talk about homecoming?
Yeah, I'll talk about homecoming. Homecoming was great. We had quite a few events that week. We had backyard games along with multiple sporting events. Do we, and then, do we have anything else in homecoming?
Dance.
Oh, yeah, the dance.
Another big thing, the dance.
Yeah, coordination as well. And it was a good, good week for sure. Just fun.
Yeah, that's kept us very busy. And just some other events to keep watch for. Tomorrow, CDLOU will have a Dia de los Muertos event on October 29th. You can ask Bridgette for more details, but.
You got a rep in the audience right now?
Yeah, but it's a really cool event. I went to one last year and my class actually got to be a part of it. But it's just a really good way to appreciate Latinx culture and to learn more about Dia de los Muertos. So you should definitely go to that. Another thing on the agenda is SSP Theater and they present the Willy Wonka musical and that's November 15th through 17th.
Starting up right now and in the next couple of weeks will be winter athletics, boys and girls basketball, swimming, boys and girls hockey, and boys and girls wrestling as well. Yeah, it'll be a fun season. Looking forward to it.
And then that's just a website for more info on our activities and athletics. A lot of other activities are starting up as well. I do math team, that's starting up. Same with debate, they're getting into their season and there's just a lot that's starting up again, so stay tuned.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next, I will be turning to board members for reports on their recent committee assignments and activities that they have been a part of and where they have seen a passion inside our district. And I will start with Kim Human.
All right. Well, the community ed tri-district meeting is going to be next week, Tuesday, so I don't have an update there. But I did have the privilege of going to the senior center lunch that we hosted as a school board last week, Thursday, and it was super fun. Had a lot of fun discussions with people, a lot of disappointment that it was only A&W root beer, but you know what? Great to be able to be a part of that.
Excellent, thank you. Wendy Felton?
Yes. One thing I am truly looking forward to coming up in, in November, as it has been mentioned a few, couple of times already, the Willy Wonka theater play, which is our fall musical at the secondary building. Truly looking forward to it on that Friday, Saturday and, and Sunday thing. So musicals are my favorite, so really looking forward to it. And you've heard me mention many times already about the Education Foundation Gala, which is coming up Wednesday, November 13th, starting at 5:30 at Mendocino Country Club. And also, if anyone is interested in making any donations to the foundation, they are having a live and silent auction that you can donate something that can be auctioned and you can attend it. It is, it is a lot of fun. I've attended it every year, especially silent auctions, because I buy a lot of Christmas presents there. So it's always, it's always great. So they will gladly accept any donations that you would like to make that they can have part of the auction program. And then also, like Kim had mentioned, the Senior Center luncheon, which was last week, which was financially supported by our school board. I was attending there also. And a couple of other things coming up there at the Senior Center, which is at Central Square. The Thursday on November 21st is a turkey gravy dinner. And then coming up on Thursday, December 12th, is our Christmas holiday potluck luncheon, which, which is very nice. Where all members of the, of the Senior Center members bring things to share for the luncheon. And I personally want to wish all of our families, students, children in South St. Paul, have a safe, fun, enjoyable Halloween, a couple of days away. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Tim Felton?
Sherash, I do not have anything this evening.
All right. And Claflin?
Thank you. Maybe I, oh, the door just closed on Jackson. I wanted to recognize Jackson's participation in the audit discussion we had earlier, because an audit is maybe not the most engaging thing for our student reps to be listening to, but he was taking really detailed notes and asked some great questions of how our budget has changed over the past 10 years. So our student reps are really learning a lot here. Perhaps there's an accountant in the future there. Math is just fantastic. An accountancy is a great career. I also want to thank all of the students and families that came to the Capoja Family Fun Night. It was amazing to see all of these young kids bringing their parents into their school, showing off where they spend their days, excited to introduce family to their friends, see each other, go back and visit previous teachers, and just show all that pride that they have in their school where they are building their community. And they were really letting all of us adults know that this was their place. That was just a great event. Glad that families are invited into the schools to participate and see that. It's sometimes hard to understand what our kids do all day when they don't tell us much. And that's a little glimpse into the lives that they spend away from home. And looking forward to seeing a bunch of those kids later this week at Halloween.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Nikki Lala Bertie?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Monica Weber?
I also had a great time with all the Halloween events, or the homecoming events, soon to be the Halloween events. The theater boosters had a great taco feed over the weekend. Always exciting to, all the various booster clubs for all the various activities. It was fun to see the, the theater people out in force. Would especially like to thank the Central Square staff and all the Senior Center staff. We had over 90 people come to our Oktoberfest event, just extremely well, well-attended. And I think it really shines a bright light on how our school district really means it when we say lifelong learners and how everyone in our community, from our littlest and ECFE all the way through our senior programming, are really a part of our school, community. I have been out talking to lots of different community members due to the time of year that it is. And the comments that I've heard is a lot of excitement about our career pathways and about just the various, like so many households I've been to where they're like, wow, I wish